All right, we will call this meeting to order, beginning with the determination of the quorum. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have seven present and zero absent, so we do have a quorum.
Mr. Clerk, will I pledge allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you all for coming this evening. You have the agenda in front of you. If there are any questions, we'll begin with an approval of agenda. So, starting, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is recognition and awards. We have none this evening, which brings us to community comment. This is a time for any members of the community to step forward and address any concerns or bring any items to the attention of the board. There's a three-minute limit per speaker and a 15-minute limit per topic. Are there any community comments at this time? Are there any community comments at this time? We have some community members coming in right now, so I want to give everyone a chance to do a community comment. All right, hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is an item that is approved by one motion. There is no discussion on this item, but items can be removed at the prerogative of any board member. And I'll just start by saying there's a contract in there for myself to be the robotics coach. So that, I think, we want to remove from the consent agenda and act on that separately right after the consent agenda. So I'll remove that item. And then, are there any other items that the board would like to remove? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, could you please do a roll call on the consent agenda?
In alphabetical order, I will vote aye.
Sorry, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
With the removal of...
With the removal of my contract.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Alphabetical order, I will vote aye. Tom Casper.
Aye.
Ted Davis.
Aye.
Edom Martholler.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jay Rovershaw. Chairman Inbrett.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, seven, zero in favor.
All right, and so this brings this to the contract for my employment as coach of the robotics team. I'll, of course, be abstaining from that vote. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item?
We are very glad to have such a qualified person coaching our robotics team.
I appreciate it.
When you build a robot, are you going to present that?
Going to be chair of the board.
I'll do my board meetings remotely, is what's going to happen. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call so we can record my abstention?
I did in alphabetical order.
Can I just...
Please, yes.
I don't see your name anywhere in here.
I didn't either.
No. Where's your name?
I was...
I was informed it was there.
I don't see it.
Where?
It's not in here under coaches. Because I was wondering that when I was researching, so I thought maybe...
And Nicole is not here today.
I was looking for the same thing.
Thanks, I was like, oh. I have no problem approving it tonight, it's just it's...
We need to add that.
I don't think we have a contract in front of us at this moment, so if there's no contract, it can wait.
Can I make a motion to add it? Okay, it just did.
Hang on to the power and see how...
You know, I don't think we can, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable doing so. Don't worry, I'm still going to act as coach. Okay. This is already in place, so that's not a concern. But if it's not here...
I am sorry, I thought it was...
Is that an activity assignment?
No. Yep, she did. Because I assigned the activity.
We'll just keep delaying it, you'll do it for free.
That's okay.
That's okay. This is fine, we will...
And actually, the contract, I think, is in your signature folder, it just didn't, for some reason, get on the consent agenda.
So we do have a contract.
You have a contract.
Trying to think if there's a way we can make this more awkward.
I apologize.
Navigate, it's ridiculous. There's a contract right here with my name on it. So this is in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm over, we table this contract to the December meeting.
Let's do that. Do we need a second, Mr. Clerk? We need a second for that motion.
Second, second.
Motion and a second to table the approval of that contract. Mr. Rovershaw.
I wait till that motion is passed and a question.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Are we going to have a closed session?
Yes.
Did we amend the agenda for that?
The agenda has a closed session at the end of it. It was just updated today, so if you're looking at an older agenda, you might not see it on...
I don't see it on...
It's at the very end, it's item 13, so...
It just says approval to hold a closed session to discuss. Doesn't actually say closed session tonight, though.
Well, but we do have to make a motion to go into a closed session.
Right.
So...
Usually it says on the agenda, though, a closed session, so I thought we were going to discuss what date to have that, is what I was, is how I read that also.
The intent is for that to be a closed session to this evening.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving on to curriculum, Curriculum Committee, Colleen Carnido.
Good evening, I'd like to give a quick update on our Monday, November 17th meeting. At our Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting, Jamie Benty came and presented several opportunities of career pathways for our high school students. We are really looking at a variety of ways in which we can increase the rigor in our curriculum that allows students to lead to careers and college readiness. And he's presented some opportunities for our students that we will be bringing to the next board work session. We just ran it through our Curriculum Committee, just to see what their thoughts were and to think about ways to improve upon our thoughts. The second presentation that was given that night is the world's best workforce by law. We have got to present that, and we will be asking for board approval on that tonight, so I will sustain from talking too much about that until Phil comes up here and speaks to it. And then Sam Oak, our new ELL coordinator, came and presented the opportunity of a new ELL newcomers program to our Curriculum Committee. Just kind of gave them a brief overview, and we talked about the fact that we'll be putting that on hold after the last discussion until the, until we get a little bit further in the school year, when all budgets will be decided. And so that was pretty much our curriculum. And next, I would like to bring up our technology report, if that's all right with you. And I've asked...
Questions on the curriculum report before we move on to the technology report? Hearing none, yeah.
Yes, I've asked Maria to come and present, because we have been very busy in the area of technology.
Good evening. Our district tech committee continues to meet and plan for our one-to-one initiative. And recently, over the past few weeks, our tech committee groups have met for the second time. We broke up the district tech committee into four subgroups. We have a survey group, a workflow implementation group, a communication and resource group, and an infrastructure group. And over the past few weeks, they've accomplished several tasks, and I want to review some of those. Our survey group recently surveyed our teachers in our district, our students, and parents in the area of technology and the one-to-one initiative. And we're currently evaluating results, and we're still receiving some of that information. But so far, we received responses from 566 households, 275 licensed teachers, and 2,051 students. So we have a lot of data coming in and a lot of good information that we're hoping to share later on. We've also recently created a blog on our website, kind of outlining the process as we move forward and some of the initiatives that we've taken so far, and just kind of give the community and the school district just an update of how our planning process is going. And so we're hoping to share some of the results of the survey. We just posted a copy of the FCTV informational video that we did, some parent letters. So we'll continue to update that as we go along. In December or January timeline, we're looking at having some parent informational meetings and some student demonstrations for our parents. We're also continuing to evaluate our infrastructure needs and our support options as we roll out a one-to-one to make sure our district can support a one-to-one initiative. Our workflow committee continues to evaluate mobile devices and the applications that can be supported on mobile devices and testing. We're also addressing professional development needs of our staff and just doing overall research of grade level and limitations, how we see this process roll out. So, you know, the committee's been really busy just doing different projects, meeting at different times, and it's been really a good experience so far. And then, on other updates, recently on November 12th, our integrationists delivered our first staff development to all the buildings. And our topic areas this year is to cover the 21st century skills, it's collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity. And the first one was on collaboration, and they just talked about the different methods of collaboration, and they introduced staff to personal learning networks and Twitter and Google Hangouts and email and face-to-face. So they kind of just covered their whole realm of different communication options, and it's kind of been the theme over this past month, is how we can develop those communication pathways. So we'll continue to focus on the 21st century skills. And then, this Wednesday, on the 26th, we'll be introducing staff in grades six through 12 on Schoology, which is going to be our new learning management system. And we're going to set up sessions with the staff so they can learn the program and actually set up sessions and classes. It's just a, it's a portal where students and staff can communicate, can see, can post assignments, can get course information, it's got a discussion board, it's got several pieces of things that relate to the coursework of the student. So we're looking forward to implementing that. Any questions? There's a lot going on.
Start with Howard.
I'm surprised by the response you got on your survey.
Yeah, we've had really good feedback. We did an online survey, but we also sent the information home to parents, so if they chose to do it paper-pencil, they could have done it that way also.
So you got 500?
566 households, and I'm still getting some in.
How many households are there that you sent out?
Um, I'm still kind of checking the numbers, I would guess about maybe 1,500 households or something.
It's a pretty fantastic turnout.
Yeah.
Must be a lot of interest.
Yeah, a lot of positive feedback.
Do you have any sense about, when you talk about the staff development, what would rise to the top as some topics that they'd be looking for?
I think it's just developing technology into the curriculum. Just kind of having that integration piece and having time to develop that integration piece. I guess similar to curriculum writing, just setting aside staff development days for that.
Yeah, our staff is really asking for, you know, you've handed us the iPads, we're learning how to use them as, you know, teaching tools, but they're really asking for, how do we integrate it into our curriculum? How do we, you know, engage students? When we give every student an iPad, what is that going to look like? And that's something that we're working on for the summertime, some of those treatments.
So are they doing some integration right now?
Some of our staff members are definitely doing some integration. They're really trying a variety of things. So, at this point, we really need to grow that, and we've got a ways to go. But we're, I think, one of the things that we did well was we handed them the iPad, you know, over the summertime, and they have it all this year, so...
Yeah, we continue to expand our pilot projects. One of the things I've done is given iPads, like 10 to 15 iPads at high school and middle school, so they can really test it in the classroom environment. A lot of students are bringing their own devices, but this is just to supplement what students do not have devices, to kind of give it a whole classroom feel, how project would work. The elementaries right now have about five iPads per grade level, and they're integrating again in the classroom. And some are just using it for different things, like Google Apps or certain applications.
Our title staff is using it for Imagine Learning. Some of our staff are using MobiMax and iExcel Math, and, you know, they're incorporating some of those. But they're also using it, which is really neat, is they're, you know, teaching students how to use it as a communication tool at this moment, as we've talked about communication this moment. And we'll continue to build the different skills, but, you know, our focus being communication. I think some of our staff grabbed a hold of some of that training and are trying some new things.
I should probably know this, but do we have a target date when we hope to have iPads for every student?
I think we're looking at the fall 2015 implementation.
Year, year from now.
Not that, that would be, you know, we're looking at whether or not we roll it out 612, or if we roll it out K12, or if we roll it out, you know, a grade level. That discussion, we have a committee that is working on that, looking on that.
It is, it sounds like it is, kind of in the near future, when we would have iPads available for all students?
Possibly, there are schools that have used it at the kindergarten as well, so yeah, there is a possibility.
At least in some classes.
Right, some, usually at the elementary levels, they don't go home with the students, they stay at the school. But, um, it's been a process.
And they may use iPad minis for the elementaries versus the full-pledge iPad. So that's the kind of things that we've been researching, our committees have been researching and bringing back to us.
Mr. Casper.
Well, I appreciate all the work that I'm hearing about. I realize how complex a project this is, and that we're in the beginnings of staff development and so on. I'd just like to go on record of desiring to hear about the difference it's making in the education of individual students in classes. You know, like, you've mentioned some apps and some programs and so on, some of which I may know a little bit about and some of which are just over my head. So, as this evolves, I'll be looking forward to some reports about, you know, the sixth grade is doing this, or the ninth grade is doing that, and have some specific examples to be able to, for myself, better understand, but also to communicate with members of the public that I'm communicating with, the difference that this technology is making for the kids.
We would like to bring our staff, actually, to share, maybe our staff and some of our students to share some of the things...
I'd be looking forward to that. I guess that's what I'm saying, is I recognize that we're early in the process. We don't have a lot of operational, you know, depth at this point. But as this evolves, I'd be looking forward to hearing about what difference it's making for students.
Actually, the math teachers are, there's a math app that they're using, and it's, you can take a picture of a problem, if you don't understand it, and it'll kind of like walk through the steps with you. And that's really cool, you know, when there's 20 kids in a class and the teacher's working one by one, like with students. So they don't really need to wait for the teacher, they can just kind of look through their iPads.
Super.
That's one example.
I could use that in math.
Me too.
Four plus seven?
Thank you very much, Colleen and Maria. And this brings us to Policy Committee. I'm guessing there was no Policy Committee this week, there's no report, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's got nothing for it.
So there's no report. We have in front of us for a second reading, Policy 210, Conflict of Interest for the School Board, for School Board members. So for those who are watching at home, the way policies work is that we have a first reading in which the board first looks at a policy and then, but cannot enact it at that time, and then it comes back for a second reading, so this policy is in front of us this evening for action, Policy 210. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then entertain discussion. Somebody have a sense of what the changes are from the previous version? We'll be rescinding the previous version in just a second here.
There's just minor language changes. Basically, we are going to adopt the MSBA to get better language. There wasn't a lot different. Let's see, it was...
Just as 4A.
I was going to say, the limitations on related employees, 4A. It's on page 210-3.
Any questions about this item? Hearing none, all of them in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us next to the rescission of the previous version of this policy, Policy 210, Conflict of Interest for the School Board. I'll entertain a motion to rescind that old policy.
So moved.
Is there... We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you very much. Kathy, is there any chance you have another pen? Mine has died on... Mr. Casper beat you to it, thank you.
I'll be saying your name on the table.
Yeah, I have my identical pen.
Sacrificing.
You always have to sit right there for me, Tom, thank you very much.
I have red if you prefer.
I'm used to making it red, no.
So moved.
All right, up next, Item 8 Finance, Financial Committee Report. Do we have a committee report this evening?
Well, we can have a lot.
Go for it.
Go ahead, Richard.
A lot of these items are on the agenda, but we had a long discussion on the, very long one, on the capital needs. I guess they asked the staff, the principals, for a wish list. And, and it's, but, big wish list.
Yeah, and it was kind of, we asked them to make, see what sort of capital projects have been deferred over the years. And so it was sort of a wish list, but it was also a list that we knew that these, or the principals knew that these had been deferred over a period of time. So it's a matter of thinning some of those things down and prioritizing now, is what the next step will be.
And then, adding some personnel too, so a recommendation to add. They'll come later on in the agenda, but... Big discussion was the capital needs.
Okay.
That...
Yep.
All right. Thank you, guys. Item 8B, these items have been reviewed by the Finance Committee, recommended for board approval, starting with the contract for the Muse Event Center for Spring Prom.
Perhaps the student representative could speak to that.
I believe she's on the committee.
I am. Our senior class president, Megan Mullinex, has been working tirelessly to find this venue for us. Her and Doug Casper have been working on that. I've only seen pictures of it, I wasn't actually able to go with them, and they toured. But it is a gorgeous building, they took a warehouse and they converted it, kind of. So it's, I don't know, it's very hard to explain because it's so pretty. But, yeah, so we're going to be going there. Hopefully, they've got a bunch of different rooms that we can run out, like a lounge, kind of for people, which is part of the contract that they were working with. And then drinks and food and everything are part of that, and it's going to be so much fun. It is. I'm so excited. But, yeah, so Megan did a really good job, I think.
How does the cost for this year compare to last year's cost?
The tickets will only be going up $10. And then, other than that, we are, the committee is planning on fundraising the rest of it, which should be too much.
Covered by student.
Yes.
The event's not a risk.
Thank you. Did we do a motion in a second?
As chairman, I would like to have the privilege of moving passage of this proposal.
Privilege.
Muse Event Center.
Chaperone, Howard.
Should we come?
A second needs to live up to that motion. Who's going to try and top that motion with a second? Is there a second?
Second, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions on this item?
I think these proms out of town, from everything I've heard, they've been working out really well. We use bus transportation to get the students there, we have good control. It seems to go over well, it's obviously cost involved. But it's an important event for these young people, and it's nice to see them have this kind of organizational skills to pull it together themselves. That's why I come in about that. Mr. Chair, what kind of fundraising activities are going to take place?
We, the prom, post-prom committee, it's a group of moms, and, not moms, parents, that put together different things for our post-prom. So we're going to be working with them a little bit and just kind of doing the same things that they do. Windmill City was still around, we did, like, things there.
You're going to have a big fundraiser in there.
Yes, we did. I think we, I'm not sure, but we're going to try to do something like that. But I'm not sure if it's going to be at Alexander's, or like, if we're going to have it in February or something, we might do it out, wherever we can do it, it'll be that. We might be doing different things where we're asking, like, tanning salons or hair places, like donate different things, and then people can bid on them, and we'll try to raise money that way. There's a few different things that are kind of in the works. We were going to try to get this done and then look on that, because we weren't sure what you guys were going to say, so...
And I'll follow up with, and I understand the fundraising, what about those students who participate in the fundraising but just can't get the dollars out to go? How are we going to address those students?
There was, they did something last year for that, but I can't remember what it was. But I know Colin, Colin Ernst was last year's senior class president. I know him and Casper, I think they did something with that. But I just wasn't...
Right, and, yeah, probably an unfair question, I apologize for that.
No, no.
Point is that nobody's going to be excluded because of economic reasons, because of family dynamics, kind of, for that. So I'll ask the same question about the Spanish trip.
All right, do you need more questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And that brings us to the spring 2016 Spanish trip to Costa Rica.
Hello. Good evening. I am Barb Sorum, Spanish teacher, there are three of us now, and so I'm representing all three of us. It occurred to me late that we always get asked to bring back a report of how things went, and so I just kind of threw together a slideshow, literally, and I don't know, they're actually, it might be kind of small. But we had 26 students and four teachers who went last spring. We go every other year, so I'll be asking for 2016. But just to give you an idea, we are still going to Costa Rica. The students voted between Costa Rica and Spain. We thought maybe we'd get back to Spain, but the cost is a big factor. So they do things like culture classes, we did dancing, Emily went, so she can answer questions too. They did dancing and cooking classes. We had a Cafe Brit tour, the one that we're going back to is the first Costa Rica tour that we did. And so there's a chocolate tour, and I know, I really miss that one. What's not to like about chocolate? The other thing that I really like that's for Costa Rica versus Spain is that this company is able to do a humanitarian aid project. And the first year, we actually worked out a school and sanded down desks and repainted them, and we painted a wall of outside the school. This time, it was a little bit more casual, we were playing with students. It was sort of a, not completely an orphanage, but it had that portion to it. It also worked where students who just needed to come outside of school hours or their parents needed them there for a lot of the day, and they just would go home to sleep. They literally, if they needed clothing or bathing or anything like that, they could have that. And there was also some groups that came in, and we played games with them, and we brought school supplies, and we, there was one group that cleaned the cafeteria, so it's some kind of a humanitarian aid project, and that's with this one. Let's see, we did the Monteverde Cloud Forest and zip lining. I was disappointed at the animal variety. And so you see a couple of things there, but I didn't see my frogs. And so I'm looking forward to going back and going to the rainforest, where we'll see more of them. And there's a whole family stay, which I don't have pictures of in this one. And so that will be four nights with this Bosque Tropical. Let's see, we are, like I said, going, we're looking for spring break of 2016, looking for board approval. This is an extra outside of the normal curriculum trip that we are doing. And we are getting better at fundraising, from nothing the first year, first couple of years, to doing a little bit more. We do get parent support... We do get parent support and student, student-parent committee going, and it's sort of how much they want to put into it, we're there to support it. And you can see in the forum, we did things with pancake breakfast, begging at Cub, which I guess went really well, though I wasn't there. And Hy-Vee coupons, Boston's got crossed out, but it was Boston's, and we did it at that time. And so, different things like that. And so, it just kind of is up to the students and the parents, the group going, how much they want to do, and how much they're willing to put into it. Is sort of where we're at. And it would only be, they'd be missing one, two, absolutely max days at that time from school. I'm trying to think what I didn't cover. Any questions? Yeah.
I'm glad to see you have a home stay.
Yes.
Built into it. Can you tell us a little more about your host families and how you find them?
Yes, we go through a company called Interact Travel, and they have been doing this for a number of years. And they have families that have been vetted and do this, and they know that they're, they're good, and they're trustworthy, and they, they know that they're supposed to try to speak Spanish. And that is the absolute best part of the trip, for the students to use Spanish. And I know some families, the students always say, oh, do they speak any English? And I say, well, I hope not. And, and then, a lot of times, the families will not let on that they understand English until the end. Oh, yeah, I understood that, so. And I don't know, Emily, did your family speak English?
Yeah, they, they did, and that was really nice. I dropped out of Spanish. I couldn't take it with my schedule. I was trying to take too many classes, right? No, so I wasn't able to take second semester, so I hadn't had Spanish for like a month. And that was real, like, it was really nice that our host families did understand a little bit of English, because then, if I was, like, so when I was like totally lost for words, they, they could still understand me. So that language barrier, it was, but it wasn't, it wasn't where it would affect me.
And you're not alone. There, we put students as two or three together, so. And they're, they're only at night, the evening, for the evening meal and at night, and then we do activities during the day. So, they come back, and it's fun to hear the stories of, oh, this, and then they didn't understand that, and, or we did this, we played that, we all got together, went to the park. Yeah, so it was, that's a good part, good portion.
Any more questions?
I'd just like to say, as the parent of a Faribault graduate who had the opportunity to do some foreign travel when they were a high school student, and then now has become a world language teacher herself. But this kind of experience has been extremely valuable. And my daughter now has taken some of her students abroad, and looking forward to doing that again, so. Because it's a wonderful opportunity for students.
Yes, it is.
Just as I mentioned with the prom, and I appreciate the fact that we're doing fundraising, I think it's a very valuable educational experience, especially with some of the activities you talked about. However, it should be, no student should be excluded because of economics if they meet the level two requirement. If they give a serious effort in doing fundraising, but for whatever reason, still can't get that dollar amount. I'd hate to see any student excluded for economic reasons, for this kind of valuable experience.
I understand. In the past, I have wanted to look into doing some kind of a scholarship program, and it just had, time-wise, just hasn't worked out. But I'm always looking for people who have information about that and ways to do that, because I think that would be very valuable as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I don't believe we have a motion or a second. Is that true? So I'll entertain a motion to approve the, where are we at? Spring two thousand sixteen Spanish trip to Costa Rica?
So moved, honor with great respect and a sense of privilege.
Howard has set a high bar.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank you for all the work you put in on this. I know that it's a risk, and I know it takes a lot of energy and responsibility on your part and your staff's part. I'd just like to thank you for making this opportunity available to our students.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item eight B three. Oatana Public Schools Agreement to Provide Special Education Services. I saw Cheryl, other she.
Good evening. We have always provided services, or contracted for services with Oatana Public Schools for many years. They provide us with services for our physical and other health disability students, as well as our blind and visually impaired students. So we contract with those specific providers through Oatana Public Schools.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Eight B four, Minnesota State Academy Sign Language Interpreter Services.
We also contract with the Minnesota State Academies for using sign language interpreter services. They do hold that contract, because we have students that are in sports activities outside of the school day that require sign language interpreters. And we find that it's a good relationship to have with them, because they also have students that are placed on our teams, or, or on our teams. And it is difficult to find interpreters for our students, both our students and theirs, and MSAD students. And when we can hire one person to do that, whether it is through our interpreters or through their interpreters, it just makes sense to be able to have that availability to be flexible and use either contract.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Thank you very much, Cheryl.
Is there another one, or?
Not yet, a little bit later. Yeah, a little bit later. I'll call you up.
Alright, next up, one time spending on capital equipment needs, district-wide. Todd, why don't you start us out on this one, and we'll take it from there.
Yep, I might have Colleen come in for some expertise too. We, Colleen did a great job of, of talking to the administrators in the district to see what sort of equipment needs that we have. At, over the last number of years, we have been kind of in cut mode, and some of the things that we end up cutting first are, are capital needs. And a lot of these things get deferred, and then they get deferred to a point where they need to be replaced. And it's a lot better to be proactive instead of reactive in a lot of these situations, so we're attempting to catch up. And then, at the same time, be more progressive by having a comprehensive plan for finances, for, for operating capital finances for the future. So, we're kind of in a catch-up mode, and now we're trying to get ahead. So, and I don't, I think, Colleen, I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about what the finance committee came up with, and certainly those that were at the finance committee chiming in.
Sure. The proposal that we had made to the finance committee was a two-pronged approach to this, because the list was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars' worth of equipment needs throughout the district, district-wide. So, our proposal was to help get some of that equipment immediately purchased in the buildings for this year yet. So we wanted to spend some money out of the undesignated fund balance in the general fund to get them caught up a little bit. And then bring a plan forward next spring, when we talk about the budget for fifteen, sixteen, and going forward, and trying to increase those current, or those allocations every year out of operating capital to get them moving forward with some of those needs. So that was our two-pronged approach, and as Richard indicated, and I may, might let the two board members talk about that discussion, but there was quite a bit of discussion about that, and how to solve that issue. And in the end, the motion was to spend eighty thousand dollars out of operating capital this year, and then talk about doing something within the budget process in fifteen, sixteen, and forward to increase those allocations. And I think as we, Todd and I further discussed it, we would like you to reconsider the undesignated general fund fund balance for the eighty thousand versus the operating capital fund balance. Because the general fund certainly is much more healthy than the operating capital fund balance is.
I think the figures, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the figures you see at the top of the paragraph, double those, right?
Yes.
Yes, and then add about eighteen thousand. I think they, the motion finally was, they arrived at eighty thousand as the total. And what we would do is give everybody their, another allocation, so.
But then wasn't there an extra twenty thousand?
About eighteen thousand extra.
To the whole district?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep, that we would then decide, have to decide on how to split.
And that's up to, to split that, that's up to?
I think we'll talk about it with the principals.
Kevin will be involved in that too, to make sure.
Yeah.
So if I understand this, the high school, the memo, that is what will be allotted, the twenty-one-five?
They currently get twenty-one-five, and so they would get another twenty-one-five, and potentially a little bit more, depending on how that eighteen thousand is spread out. Correct.
And just, can you, just very quickly, what are some of the requests that are coming through? What kind of capital?
Oh, most of it has equipment for the classrooms, for example, the high school microscopes, babies for the home, the family and consumer science classes, desks, technology, carpet pads for the elementary, lots and lots of things. You know, none of it, as I reviewed it, I know Richard called it a wish list. It really, and Lyle would, I think he begged to differ with you at the finance committee meeting, he said these are truly needs, and I agree. There was nothing frivolous on that list.
Chairs, tables.
Doubt that it would be frivolous. Thank you, Colleen.
Wasn't there's, well, there was maybe a little frivolous in the list, but.
I don't remember any.
Wasn't there flat-screen TVs for the teachers lounge?
For high school.
I think it was. I, I don't.
That's what I was somebody.
Yes, that was on the list.
There was, but again, most of the stuff was important, and that's why that double, then extra eighteen or twenty. And then, the board, or whatever, will review it next year, right?
Yep, in fifteen, sixteen, it would be brought, the, any increase in that operating capital allocation will be brought to you as part of the budgeting process.
We're looking at a seven-year-old budget allocation for capital.
At least it says. It sounds like we don't know before seven years ago, so.
Well, Lyle, Lyle said ever since he's been here, so at least, has he been here thirteen years, or?
So it hasn't changed in many years.
So there was some discussion, actually, about allocating the whole amount, I don't know if you wanna speak, but, but people felt that maybe we should just allocate this amount this year, but obviously, look ahead at increasing their allocation, the budget too.
Yeah, there was people, and I was one, that let's, well, reviewing the list, of course, but let's, let's spend the money within three years, or let's, over a three-year period, and, and make sure that those are really needs in the list, which I don't know what the amount would be, but then you would be caught up. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. But, didn't quite get through that.
Colleen, I had a question, just to clarify, 'cause I know I talked to both of you, and you mentioned it, but I wanna highlight it, because I think it's important if we're gonna make a motion to do this. You, you mentioned that the recommendation of the finance committee was to use the operating capital fund.
Right.
Which you became concerned about, 'cause you felt that fund was not healthy enough to support the expenditure. If I understand this correctly, right, and so you were gonna suggest it can get out of the undesignated, unreserved fund.
Correct.
Which is a much healthier fund at this point.
There are dollars there to support it. It, it's just not as healthy as the undesignedated, so I would feel more comfortable. About four hundred and fifty thousand versus a point-two million, yeah.
Then on that list is some safety concerns that should be addressed.
Sure.
You know, things are talking about risers with choir.
Yep, choir risers that are.
Fail.
And there were some other issues too, building issues, and camera issues, security issues. Those I removed off the list, because I really wanted us to focus on equipment, and those were given to Kevin. So they will work into Kevin's budget when he talks about facility needs.
Having been a part of some of those capital discussions a number of years ago, I know that there had been requests from what I call the industrial technology department. And with our emphasis on steam developing over the last couple of years, are there any, any parts of this? There's not a detailed list in, in my documents, were there any requests from the industrial technology department in terms of updating equipment? For example, I know there was a long discussion a number of years ago about the welding equipment in the metal shop. So I, I guess, is that, has that been a part of this discussion?
Not this particular discussion, but I think that Mr. Lesman has talked with Mr. Sesker about a pretty comprehensive list for the automotive program.
And we're working with South Central College to look at some cost for that piece, so that's part of the.
Well, that, yeah, that would be certainly another area of interest, but some of our other technology programs that over the years have, if the discussions were accurate at the time, and I had no way of checking on it, they were, you know, in some significant obsolete equipment in those areas, and I don't know that that's been updated during these years of the dark time.
And I would, I would add, I think that's why several finance committee members did not want to look at a large allocation over a period of years, because we have programs developing or adding staff, that we wanted to have that be part of the bigger picture going forward when we look at the budget in the spring. So we would, that's why we would sort of limit the amount they were allocating at this time. Because I, if you're looking at the list, I do not see that type of item on it.
So if this, this amount that we might be considering tonight does not include that, but that's part of the plan going forward to look at how we're gonna budget?
In the spring, yep. Yep, over the next two or three years, yep.
Colleen, is the reason this is coming before us tonight is you want authorization to take that money out of the unappropriated fund balance?
Correct. Both the dollar amount and the fund. I mean, you can decide either one. I'm okay with either one. I just would, I, I would recommend that it come out of the general fund versus operating capital. But if you choose to do operating capital, that would be okay too.
I think you scared us pretty. I don't think we want to overrule you. So moved.
So can we just, I wanna just keep clear on, so the motion is for, can you state an amount in which funds, so that that's clear? Because I think that's the, those are the two questions.
Eighty thousand?
Eighty thousand.
Out of.
Out of the general fund.
Yep.
To help support the capital request from the schools.
So we have a motion for the amount of eighty thousand dollars to support capital equipment in the schools, coming from the general fund. Is there a second?
Second. Richard, can you have it?
Okay, thank you.
Richard Brims. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Colleen, do we have a process for deciding, making sure that all of these requests make sense, common sense?
The first step is that each building principal has a process within their building to identify the needs for their building. So as I've been told, I think most buildings go through their department heads or grade-level chairs, and, and get a list of those needs. Then, I'm not sure how they prioritize it within the building. We do have a principal here tonight, so we might wanna ask him. But then, as those purchase orders come through, they get reviewed by myself. So, there is a, my last line of review on that, but I've never, they've never bought anything foolish, or that they didn't absolutely need. They simply haven't had enough money to be foolish.
I suspect that's the case, but we have to have a lot of trust that somebody, somebody's, I'm making a kind of a walkthrough to see, what are you really requesting, how will it be used, and does it make sense compared to the other needs we have?
Yep. I absolutely trust the principals to do that job. And I think, and I can't speak for Todd, but I've not, they've not given me any reason not to trust that they would do right by this.
These things have a way sometimes of coming back to haunt you, when somebody reports something that's wrong. It's just always kind of nice to know there's a little bit of. It's just always kind of nice to know there's a little bit of oversight to look.
Would this, this would not go through finance, the buying equipment again, right?
No.
No, okay.
I don't think it's necessary, I mean, you could do that, but it'd be up to you.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on a one-time spending on capital equipment needs in the amount of eighty thousand dollars from the general fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you all.
Thank you.
We're now at item eight B six, the addition of an assistant DECA advisor at the high school.
It, it's, yeah, pretty self-explanatory, we just have a, a lot of kids that are in the DECA program. It's been very successful at the high school, and we just need a little help.
And this is, can you say, explain to the public what DECA is?
Yeah, it's an organization through the business department that is, it's like an extracurricular activity where, Emily, are you in that? None of that one, where students create different business projects, and then they're presented to whatever contest or whatever means that is that they present those things. And then they have, students get feedback on their presentation, they get awards. There's a state competition that they can go to with these, and there's also a national competition too. And it's been a very successful program since Jerry Keklo was brought in.
It kind of goes along with vocational education.
Very much so, yeah, the business, yes.
That's something I certainly think you want to support.
Signed up over a hundred students, right?
A lot of kids.
Hundred plus, and it's growing.
Great thing.
Mr. Ch, oh. That with, with this DECA, is that this was active when I went to high school back in the sixties. So to me, this is not new, I wasn't in it, I knew students that were in it, so that was in the, you know, late sixties, maybe even before that, so it's been around, and so.
Is the salary amount covered under the master agreement with the FEA?
I believe so, I, I just assumed that it was, I guess.
Currently, there isn't an assistant DECA advisor, so we would have to add that position. But we generally, according to Nicole, pay seventy-five percent of the head salary, so.
So there's a four million in there?
Yes, yep.
I don't believe we have a motion and a second in the direction, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The addition of special education paraprofessionals at Crick and Roosevelt.
The request in front of you is for additional staff for increased student needs in each of the buildings listed. I really can't go into specific details about the students because of data privacy issues, but know that the process that we use is very extensive during the months leading up to requesting additional staff that we have in place. We ask for schedules, student needs, IEP, schedules of the entire staff for, of special education for each building, knowing what those are. Our students with Unique Needs Program at Crick, that is a one-to-one program because of the intense nature of the needs of the students in that program. And we do anticipate that we do need staff every year for that program, but we don't ask for those until we absolutely need them when the students come, because it's, students come and go in that program.
This request is for this year, right?
Yes, it is.
Is that dollar amount before or after reimbursement?
After reimbursement. That's the number, the number that we're asking for, it's very large.
These are trained paraprofessionals for these type of students, right?
We do train the paraprofessionals, if they're new hires, usually they're new hires that we have to post for and then train, or we move more, more experienced staff into those positions, or sometimes staff choose to move into those positions. So it just, it just depends on the needs of the student.
Make a motion to hire the additional staff?
Second. We have a motion and a second to hire the addition of special education paraprofessionals at both Crick and Roosevelt. Any further discussion?
I'm stood in your place, Carol, so I know the requests come through because you don't know, beginning of the year, what's going to happen with special ed.
Right, and, and we've just really had an influx of some needs that we just could not anticipate. And of course, with programs like the Kenner River Education Center and the SUN program, those are changing needs of students throughout the year.
So my assessment during the finance meeting, or my thoughts during the finance meeting is these are very high-needs kids.
Yes, they are.
And the help is very dedicated, skill, need skills to work with these kids. And it's very expensive. Our taxpayers will pay a significant portion of this, about a third perhaps?
Less, less than a third.
Less than a third, more than twenty percent anyway. But I just like to point out that this is the difference between public school and private school, is that a public school is charged and responsible to do an education weekend for these children. And I think it's a great service to provide to those parents as well. And sometimes we may cringe when you see what the cost to hire people to do this, but at the same time, it's very rewarding and something that our public schools need to do.
Correct, thank you for your words.
Not, not just need to do, but actually accept gladly to do it.
That all children have access to an education?
Exactly, well said.
Thank you, Howard. I no longer can remember if we have a motion or a dispute.
That's an honest thing.
It's not a comment on how long you took there, Howard, you spoke eloquently. So we do, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to support the addition of special education paraprofessionals at Crick and Roosevelt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, thank you very much, Carol. And next comes up the addition of point eight for teacher for community education, adult, community and adult education.
Thank you, good evening. The addition of a point eight for adult education will help us with some of the new things that are taking place at adult education, in terms of citizenship programs, possibility of an adult diploma program. We're revamping the GED program. Jessica Lewis, our coordinator for adult ed, has really restructured programming there. We're seeing much more persistence of students and higher classroom participation than ever before. So we're looking, instead of having all of the hourly teachers that we have, we would like to have a point eight for this year, so we're prorating it from January through June to help Jessica pull off some of these new ideas.
So do I understand you correctly, Emery, that this position really is a replacement of hourly positions?
Yeah, it, not of hourly positions, but one of the individuals that may have interest is an hourly staff, so that person would probably apply among other folks. This will be an open process, so it would replace some of those hours, yes.
So, so is this an increase in the total amount of FTE?
Yes, yes.
Not just a reorganization of, actually an increase of?
It's an actual increase.
And, and it, it's still getting paid for through community yet, is that correct? All comes out of community?
All comes out of fund for.
I'll entertain a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion on the side of? Emery left before I said. You're okay, thank you. All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next is the addition of two four-hour paraprofessional, classroom paraprofessionals at Roosevelt.
We do have Mr. Ronay in here too, if you have questions about this.
Did you want a quick summary? You had, if I'm not mistaken, from the finance committee, did a kind of one sheet, one-page sheet get forwarded to you to give kind of the outline of the need, the specific need? We have great class sizes at Roosevelt, and it just is unfortunate that our highest class sizes are in our first grade. When you have class sizes of twenty or twenty-one in fifth grade, and twenty-four and twenty-five in first grade, it just, it, the need is, the need is there, so. Two, two four-hour positions, so eight hours would be the same that's serviced, that's currently serviced to all the kindergarten classrooms in the district, two hours per classroom. We felt it's fair to us, you know, the same for the first grade then, it's two hours per classroom, four classrooms.
How do you compare with first grade with the other elementaries?
I called today, and if, as of today, from what I heard from the secretaries at the two other elementary buildings, we're at ninety-eight, Jefferson is at eighty-seven, and Lincoln's at seventy-nine.
Now, will this continue through the other grades, just for this year?
Just for, it's a, it's a one-year, a one-year request.
But just that's it?
Yeah, it's a one, a one-year request. You know, we had talked a little bit about the finance, and you were there about, about having a meaningful discussion in the spring of the year about where do we go for the future. I think there's some important conversations had as we continue our relationship with the state, with our focus rating, both at Jefferson and Roosevelt, and what their recommendations are with the use of funds to, to improve our academic standing through that focus process.
I move approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion?
When we were at finance, we had a chance to visit with Mr. Ronay about the needs of his classrooms, and I'd like to emphasize that this is kind of a minimum. It's actually a real bargain for us, we only hire these teachers for four hours a day, and we don't pay benefits for them. Probably could use them eight hours a day, or seven, or whatever it is. But this was kind of our minimal requirement, and I think when you're looking at first graders at such an vulnerable age, when it comes to reading skills and some of the other skills, that if we can give this kind of help in the classroom for this price, it's a real bargain for us, and it has opportunity to make a big difference in the success of these students. And when I looked at the statistics in this classroom, there were some very special needs there, so I think this is money well spent.
Thank you.
I just would, I appreciate that you always include teachers in the process that appears when their signatures appear and what you send to them, so I think that's, appreciate that, that teachers are involved.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the budget. Starting with an enrollment report. You can see our numbers are holding very steady, up by one student, so that's as steady as I've ever seen it. So our numbers are holding firm throughout the year. And, and that this keeps us on track for having numbers that were still significantly higher than we had anticipated for this year. Which created some challenges at the beginning of the year for, for organizing classrooms, but is also strong for our fund balance, so that's.
Right, so I think it speaks to the additional requests that we've been seeing over the last several months to add staff at this point.
Absolutely. Any comments on this, this is just a report, no need for action this evening, okay? There are, there is no financial report this evening, so that brings us to consider approval of gifts and donations. We have one from the Roosevelt PTO in the amount of six hundred dollars for the accelerated reader program at Roosevelt Media Center. So as always, we thank all those who step forward to serve the district with donations and with their time. We appreciate that. So I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So this brings us to other committee reports, insurance committee, do we have, it says we have a report this evening?
The insurance committee did meet, and we're busy looking at bids now with the new Health Insurance Transportability Act, Transparency Act, that was passed last legislative session. We are now required to get bids every two years for our health insurance. So that is a lot of work to do, a health insurance bid, the paperwork is about two feet tall, as you can imagine. But we have an insurance consultant who will help us through that process. We are required to put that out for bids, and I think he's going to probably go to five or six different companies, which is good, but we're also required to get a bid from the public employees insurance program too. So that's the statewide health insurance pool. Other than that, that's what really we'll be busy with, with the next, in the next few months, so.
Is there a requirement to go with a low bid on this in the way that there are for building projects?
Somewhat, what you run into that you have to consider is that the current bargaining agreements have language in them that create an aggregate value of health insurance benefits. So you have to at least meet that aggregate value. If you want to do something less in aggregate value, you have to get the union's approval to do that. So that becomes more important really than cost, but we absolutely look at the lowest cost too. But we have to make sure that we, that we put out the specs of what we have for all our plans, and we ask every insurance company better to meet those specs or exceed them, so.
I'll entertain a, we don't have a.
Nope.
I want to entertain you. Any other questions? Wait until I have a robot.
Impressions? I'm staying quite similar.
Thank you all. Next, item nine B, wellness committee, there's no report this evening. Nine C, community ed, Anne Marie, report.
Hello again, we've got after-school programming that just started a couple of weeks ago at all three elementary buildings. We've got Roosevelt at about eighty students, Lincoln and Jefferson around sixty, so it's been a good start. We have targeted services and community education staff working in that program to serve our students and to really academically and through enrichment to have those kids progress. After-school programming continues at Fairbowl Middle School as well. The elementaries are two days a week, the middle school is three days a week. Moving on to other good news, we just received notice that our Office of Refugee and Resettlement School Impact Grant has been awarded again to community ed, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. With Sam Oak being here, it just gives us that much more opportunity to serve our students at the middle and high school refugees. There, really, we're supposed to target students that are one year or less in the country, but typically we look at three years or less. And Sam and Eric Sandberg and I have been talking about what we're going to do with that program. We're, we're just in the initial phases, probably adopt a lot of what we did last year. Lots of leadership opportunities, lots of social, emotional learning and academic pieces. We saw a lot of progress with GPAs last year and just with confidence. We are partnering with the community through enrichment to start a walking program at the middle school. We'll offer that two days a week, and there's really no charge to the public. It was a community request, and we felt really honored that the community came and asked us that, and that we can actually provide a space, especially in the wintertime, to have that walk. I don't know if that's been worked out completely, but I think it's six to eight. Yeah, and we were either looking at Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. Yeah, and volunteers will staff the program, will make sure they have all the appropriate background checks and all of that good stuff. Yeah, and volunteers will staff the program, will make sure they have all the appropriate background checks and all of that good stuff. And Jason, will you talk about the NASA grant?
Uh, yes, I will.
Okay, good, okay. I don't want to steal your thunder.
We're gonna have a contract.
Well, no, I mean, and it's, it's something I had nothing to do with. I got to walk into this with, with the program. So the robotics program is starting up for the first time this year here in Faribault and I was excited to be able to step into that just a few weeks ago. And as I stepped in, I learned that, that we had already applied for, for a substantial grant from, from NASA to fund the team. It's the selective grant. Just about all first-year teams get some sort of funding from grants, but the most prestigious of these is the NASA grant and the largest of these is the NASA grant. And we were informed just within this last week that we received that in the amount of six thousand dollars, which is very important to the, to the financing for the team. Which does not, by the way, mean that we cannot use more community members' support for that program.
Exactly.
While it is good news, I would, I would not like to send the message that, that we couldn't use even, even more support. But, but that was exciting for our program, I think speaks well. I think Phil.
Yes.
Phil Johnson wrote the grant application, so I can take no credit for it, but I'm happy to receive the, the funds from it and to be used with the program.
An additional five for next year as well.
Five more for next year, right.
As long as we follow the process.
Totally, definitely. Yeah, we'll try to make sure we get the paperwork in to make that happen.
Yes.
We'll do it.
Okay, well, that's.
You said NASA?
NASA. The NASA. My students ask me the NASA, yes. The NASA, the one that sends astronauts into outer space. They're the ones who gave us money for, for robotics.
That's pretty cool, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Very exciting. Phil worked really hard on that, so, thank you. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anne Marie. And that brings us to, I think, facilities report, is that right? Eleven nine D, Kevin.
Good evening, board. Since our last board meeting, we have had a public forum. Actually, last Monday, a week ago today, we had a public forum here at the city chamber and covered a lot of topics, had a few questions that arose from that and have hopefully answered those to, those people that had that. The committee has a resol, or there's a resolution on your next item of business on your board meeting for tonight. But for those new watching, we started this process several months ago to talk about a new space for the district office that we'd own a space versus renting and also that for adult education. We have settled on two sites at this point. The adult education site would be at the high school and the district office would be located at the middle school. Working with a local architect engineering group of ISG, they have researched and worked with the committees. We have three committees, that being the user group committee, the cabinet, and then also the facility committee on refining the square footage, getting that down to a number that's manageable by cost per square foot to keep it within our budget. Otherwise?
Any questions for Kevin at this time?
Just a comment. That, that public forum was posted and advertised in the newspaper, so we've had some questions about whether it was posted, but it was in the paper.
Just to break, I would say unfortunately the newspaper didn't post it until the date of, which was unfortunate. It was not the way we certainly would have ever planned that.
It was posted before.
Yeah, because it was a Monday, maybe.
It was posted.
Friday or something, I think.
It was before.
I think it was that Friday, that last.
I know I saw an announcement that Monday afternoon.
It was article the week before, little article.
And it was, it was also recorded and aired on FCTV since the meeting as well?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Kevin? I don't necessarily have to sit down as we'll get to the next item. Questions before we move into the next agenda item? We will move into the next agenda item then, which is other matters. So this is the item we've been talking about for a number of months. I would say almost six months now, it seems like.
Yes, been quite a while.
Since, since the beginning of the summer, almost certainly.
I'm looking at some documents from May, from the May meeting and then the May finance committee.
May, June, July, August, September, October. So six, seven months is how long we've been talking about this.
And we had a special work session on the I-7th where we reviewed pretty similar materials to what we're looking at today, in my mind.
So we've been looking at this for a while and so tonight is our, our time to take some, some action on this item. So we have a resolution in front of us. The materials are attached to your board packets. These are the same materials we looked at, I think it's at the, the work session. There's nothing.
Nothing different.
Nothing different at this point. So what we're looking for this evening is an approval of the locations of the buildings, the size of the buildings and the, the size of the, of the financial aspect of the buildings, so the budget for the buildings. We had not intended this evening to settle the finances of the building. We had looked at an, an option for that at the last meeting, but it was not at that point intended to, to be the final say, nor was it intended that we would take action on that tonight. But there have been a number of questions around that, so I think if the board wants to discuss what that is or what options we are, are not, are or are not comfortable with, that would also be appropriate this evening. The original intent had been to hammer off the details of, of the financing at a later date. The finance committee met this morning, that's correct, and my understanding is that they endorsed a plan to be similar to, to the plan that Colleen laid out for us at the work session, which includes financing at some level of, I think the total budget is, we're looking at about four point seven, is that correct?
You are correct.
Four point seven million, and about one point six of that Colleen had suggested coming out of fund balance. And the finance committee looked at this morning and my understanding is that there was a unanimous approval of that sort of plan. So for the board to consider that, it's still up to the board to decide whether or not to follow that recommendation from the finance committee or not, but that is something that came to us. And whether or not we want to act on that this evening or if we're comfortable with the finances of the district to, to make the decision on this project at this time, given the size and scope and the, the needs that we have balanced with the rents that we're paying right now, whether or not this makes financial sense to hammer off those details. I think we've been doing that in December. Would that be the plan to hammer off this?
That was the original plan, yes.
Right, yeah. They'll give Eller some time to, to hammer off the numbers for us and come up with a, a very specific plan. And we could ask for a variety of plans if we wanted to do that, is that true?
Yeah, we're, we're going to take the, we took the finance committee's suggestion and we'll use that to be a starting point with Eller's and then they'll come up with a suggestion that they believe is the best plan for the district.
And I think if the board wanted to add suggestions to that, we would be willing, free to do so.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be at the, they'll, the next meeting at the work session. Eller's will be there to talk about that and that's where the board can give feedback.
Feedback on, on those things as well. So open up to, to comments from the board at this time.
To try, apologize for interrupting you earlier. In your discussion, I guess there were a couple of things that the finance committee thought would be important just to bring up for the public, to reiterate a couple of points and please correct any wrongs. One was the, the overall goal is to save taxpayer money by decreasing the levy lease. And those numbers, I mean, we would be at a, two thousand thirty-four, we would not be paying any levy lease payments at that point. And so it would de, it would go decrease every year, the amount the taxpayer would be paying. So just to reiterate, the overall objective would be to decrease that. And that the timing of the building isn't really associated with passing the levy. The timing of the building project is associated with our leases expiring and needing to make a plan for the future because if we were to sign leases, we'd be looking at additional fifteen, fifteen-year lease at this point.
Five years.
Sorry, five years. Five-year lease at this point. So that's what the timing is related to, that it's not related to the levy that was passed to address academic support, curriculum improvements for our programs. Is there anything else that you guys could add?
To, to clarify, a comment you made, just real quickly, you talked about the taxes going down. Property taxes would go down immediately.
Yes, yes.
They would also go down immediately and then over the course of the twenty years of paying off various parts of that, would, would continue to go down over the course of that and after twenty years, we would be done with lease levies, which is something that we do, do now. And so that's really the, the number one goal, I think, of this project is to, to, to stop needing to make payments of those lease levies long-term. That doesn't make financial sense for the district. We can do that by improving some spaces for, for our adult basic ed program and locating them in, in the district office and I think also locating them in places that serve our students and much better and our staff much better.
And just so you know, the lease is, comes due June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. So the actual tax impact, the reduction in tax would actually be two thousand seventeen. So it wouldn't be immediate, immediate, it'd be in two thousand seventeen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Other comments? I think Richard.
Yeah, both buildings would have to be built for this to work, basically. So you can't pick and choose really if you want to accomplish our task or our goals that the board has set. So they both work. They're tied together, but not physically.
Oh, Adam, I'm, I'm particularly excited about the location of the adult basic ed to be near our high school. I think serves our students there very well. It adds a lot of educational spaces that can be used by the high school. It makes the adult basic education program adjacent to our high school, which serves them, and it brings that program, continues to keep that program close to South Central, which I think is so vital for those, those students who are using those services of, services of AVE, so I'm very excited.
Colonel was present this morning. He said those four classrooms will be used from seven AM to ten.
Right, right. There's additional classrooms there for the students. I think there's also been some questions, because there is some additional square footers, the vast majority of which I think is actually in classroom or meeting space that can be used as classrooms. It's, it's not in, in many, many more offices. It's in spaces that serve our students and I think that's fantastic.
Mr. Richard, I, first of all, I served on the facilities committee and I heard Kevin and the architects talk about the rationale for it and what transpired and, you know, how you came out with this much of a request and narrowed it down to a very legitimate and doable request. And I certainly am supportive of the, the proposal. However, it's difficult for me to act on this without knowing what the financial structure is going to be. I am not at all supportive taking money out of the unappropriated fund balance to support this. I don't believe that's the purpose of the unappropriated fund balance. I know it's very healthy and I respect that, but I've also been in this district when the fund balance was not very healthy. And that is not exactly an easy thing to go through. I certainly understand the rationale for it and I'm all in favor of, of giving our taxpayers a significant break due to the reduced in the levy for leased facilities. You always are faced with some long-term ramifications when you lease facilities, because you don't know what the landlord's going to do with those facilities in the long term. But I do have some real struggles with the financing, finances of taking unappropriated fund balance dollars to help support this. I'm just really struggling with that. Support the concept, support what needs to be done, but I'm only seeing half the picture right now at this point, so. I really have a difficulty because of that one piece.
I'd like.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
To me, the unappropriated fund balance is there for purposes for instructional issues that come up in the foreseeable future or non-foreseeable future. That those dollars, if, you know, we need to add classes, instructional classes, you know, we've had a number of requests even today for money out of the unappropriated fund balance. I think if we took a long-term picture of what our district should be in three to five years, there may be educational programs that we want to institute that are not going to be able to be instituted because that fund balance may not be there to use. So I just think that the use of the unappropriated fund balance, however healthy it is, should not be used for facilities, but should be used for instructional purposes.
I'd like to second Mr. Robichaud's comments. I too have some difficulty in looking at using the unappropriated fund bal, or the undesigned fund balance. In my rough calculations, we approved somewhere close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditures from that fund just this evening. We were told that there were probably an additional three hundred thousand dollars of, of deferred capital equipment that, that might have been paid for out of that balance. I know we're looking at that, but that's a long-term discussion. And having gone through far too many budget cuts over the last number of years and, and my last four years on the board, I, I do not want to be in a position where student opportunities become limited because we have spent our money on, on building space that is not directly connected with student achievement. I recognize the need for it. I support the, the taxpayer break that could come from financing this, but I am very concerned about using that fund balance as a down payment on, on a building project. So I don't know where that puts me in terms of any actions we're taking today. As I understand it, we're approving a concept without, with awaiting to prove financing arrangements at a later time. And I do support the concept. I think it's a wonderful thing to reduce taxes and provide our adult basic ed and our administration with facilities that are, are better than what we currently have. But I do have a problem with using the undesigned fund balance as part of that.
A question I have for you, either your daughter, Colleen. We can do it without using the fund balance. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
If we decide to do that?
Yes.
So the plan is to, the thought was to prove this tonight so our architects could get busy and start working so we can get this up by the time our lease runs out and then to decide on the funding next month after we've heard back from Eller's and their suggestions. And the finance committee this morning, after careful deliberation and quite lengthy deliberation, actually suggested that we use some of the fund balance and for some good reasons. But I think we can have that debate next month, but I'm going to be in favor of supporting this resolution tonight because it's good common sense. It does not cost the taxpayer money. It saves the taxpayer money and I think it allows our architects to keep moving.
I, I will be supporting this because it's, it's like very simple. It's cheaper to, not to rent all the time. Because that's just, just like you're renting, you're basically moneying down the drain, so. But again, with the financing, because I'm in the finance committee, we don't know exactly what because with, our accountant is going to analyze it, I mean, many different ways, right? And we just, we just don't know. But again, it's, you know, going with my background, the buildings that we're in, to me, the town square is substandard and when you've got the district office, you know, way out almost into, out of the city limits, you know, and then with the smells coming over certain, you know, and then frozen water lines and porta potty, you know, that's really embarrassing.
Sure, I, again, I just want to emphasize that I am not opposed to the, to the concept. I understand it'll save taxpayers' dollars. I have no problem. By the way, the district office has been out in that location since the early seventies, so it's, it's, it's survived. But I also appreciate the fact that we need to relocate and do something, so. You know, to save taxpayers' dollars, absolutely. I don't think there's anybody on this board who's not supportive of that. That being said, what do we know five or six down, years down the road when it comes to if our fund balance, if we don't get appropriations from the legislature, the level we should, we may be back to the taxpayers again for an increase. That's a big what-if. And the fact that we did just pass a levy this last several months and that, that did help our fund balance as well, so. I'm just really struggling with that part of it, not the concept, not the fact that it's going to save taxpayers' dollars. Just if, if we can be assured, if I can be assured that we can do this without taking money out of the fund balance, which I think is for instructional purposes, not for facilities, I would have no problem.
Well, I think we can debate that next month and hear, hear the arguments for and against, but remember, if we don't have our fund balance, we pay more interest. And so we end up spending money for interest and that's taking away from educational dollars as well. So I think it's going to be a matter of what we're comfortable with in the end.
I would suspect our interest is not a million or six.
Well, when you accumulate it too, so, but, like you said.
We're still paying your million six, right? That's the way you pay the questions whether or not we pay the interest.
But again, that was a figure we just came up with, it's been there, so.
Well, it threw me for a loop, but Jason answered the question, we're still going to pay the million six one way or another, it's whether we borrow the money or whether we don't. And I'm always thrilled when we have a fifteen percent fund balance, I get a little uncomfortable when we get down much less than that. But we can, we can do what the finance board is recommending, still stay above the fifteen percent.
It'd be about seventeen and a half.
Nevertheless, let's talk about that next month and see what the group, our board as a group is comfortable with, but let's not hold up on the program tonight for the rest of it.
Well, I'd like to say, I don't, I have no desire to hold up the process of this, but my concerns are also the financial. Correct me if I'm wrong, if our fund balance continues to remain healthy and we do wish to reduce our interest payments, we should have the opportunity each spring in the budget to perhaps pay down that, those bonds more quickly.
They won't be bonds, no, this is not a bonding project.
Yeah, that's what I'm not saying.
Basically.
Pay down that amount, that amount that we financed more quickly on an annual basis. Instead of taking one point six now, without knowing what the legislature's going to do in its reconfigured form coming this spring, but in May of next year, May the following year, May the following year after that, should our fund balance be in a position of health, that we could theoretically at least choose to pay off that finance portion incrementally over time rather than a one point six million amount currently.
Yep, those are good questions to ask elders when they come in December and I'll kind of tell them ahead of time too. But I'm sure there's, I'm not sure, I guess we'll have to make sure there's no prepayment penalty in that financing. The other thing that might come into play is, you know, sometimes interest rates differ depending on if you do have a down payment or don't, so if you don't, you might pay a little bit more in interest, I don't know that. But those will be good questions that will have elders come in and address.
The answers we don't have at this moment.
And we can run several scenarios of amortization schedules, so you can see what kind of interest you would pay depending on how much you put down, so we can certainly give you all that data to look at. You can see if you don't put the one-six, what is it going to cost you then? And it would come out of operating capital, those are where we're funding the payments. So it would be less money available for equipment and facility needs if, the more we borrow.
Kevin just fell off his chair.
Yep, sorry Kevin.
I, so I just want to make sure that I understand that what I'm hearing from the board at this point is, what I'm hearing at this moment is definite support for the project. I have not heard a concern raised at this point that the project is anything less than good for the district. But I do see a variety of opinions on the nature of the financing for the project. And I guess one thing I want us to grapple with is the fact that we may not be unanimous on that when it comes time to a vote for that.
Yeah, with the financing, we talked about financing and plus I had meetings, I took it upon myself to meet with Mr. Sessker and Colleen on the financing to really understand it. That it's, it's still, the financing's still up, I mean, it's still fluid. We did, but, you know, from my background, again, we've got to get the architects working. You know, we can't wait, and you can't build something like this, a modular design, thrown up in two weeks. So we have to get them working on it, so it's, we still will have all the financing options which are numerous. Numerous, I mean, it just.
Well, I guess from what I'm hearing on the board right now, there's some very philosophical differences in the nature of the financing. And I respect that, you know, as a board, sometimes we have differences and we settle differences with votes. What I would like to suggest to the board, but I want to see what the comfort level is this, is because there's a feeling that this is a good project and we should go forward, I like the idea of voting on these things separately. Because I think this project is going to go forward, given the support, unanimous support I'm hearing from the board. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that, because I want to make sure, respect that if I'm wrong, but I think that's what I'm hearing. And to make sure that we're on the same page, that this is a good thing for the district and then take a separate vote, when we do a separate vote on the financing. And that may well be, from what I'm hearing, not a unanimous vote because of disagreements on the nature of feelings on the way we should finance. And I think I want to respect that for the various board members. But we do need to make a decision on that, we'll make that decision with a vote. So I want to see if people are comfortable with that, we are doing this in two stages. We are taking one vote to, I think, characterize whether or not we support the project by allowing this project to go forward and a separate vote on the financing. But perhaps people are conditional on the financing, if the financing's not where they want it to be, they don't want to vote for the project, and that's sort of the conundrum I'm seeing, and I want to get a sense for that.
I'd like to make a motion that we, for approval of resolution fourteen dash ten.
All right, thank you, Richard, we have a motion and a, is there a second for the motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, thank you. So I want to bring that to the board and is there a comfort level with doing that in two separate stages as that?
To be part of my resolution that, yes, what you're saying, that we.
Right, the resolution in front of us is not specified that this is financed, so that is not being specified with this resolution. It sets the scope and the budget, if I'm not.
Yes, four point seven.
It's based on the square feet of the project.
Right.
And the total, and the total cost.
And I think, so the question before us at this moment, if I were to phrase it for myself, is can the district afford to do this? Is it the right financial decision for the district? To me, it's a secondary question of the nature, we're either going to borrow that or spend it from fund balance. And I hear there's legitimate disagreements on that and I respect that. For me, the question is, is this within the scope of the district? You know, one thing to put this in perspective for me, I don't know if I should say this number or not. Oftentimes, these numbers seem so large, four point seven million, and it's a sizable amount of money, we want to take it seriously. This is a twenty-year investment and over that time, this district will almost certainly bring in and spend on the order of a billion dollars, if you add up our budgets every year. So this is not a financial decision that I expect to have a long-term impact, which doesn't mean I'm denying the importance of the decision, I just want to make sure we have it in some perspective as we do that.
Because the impact is ten years for one building and fifteen years, right?
It's what I did, but.
Based on what we have now, it's ten years for one building and fifteen years for the other, then it's ours.
About two point six million dollar taxes.
In two thousand thirty-four, when we're done.
Tim, I just want to be clear on one thing, we're not, we're deciding tonight to fund it, we're just deciding, we're just not deciding how to fund it.
That's correct, that's exactly right, the resolution in front of us places an amount on it and it places a targeted size on the project. It does not designate the precise details of the financing.
And it would be my assumption that part of that financing discussion would be next Monday night at the work session.
Absolutely. Elers will be there, right, is that correct? Elers will be there.
I'll make sure that, we'll make sure we call it.
Also, and it's not, it's with this project, but not really with this project, is the STEM classrooms. One at the high school, one at the middle school, to be discussed later on, but they're, they might be working on that too, sort of. The architects, sort of.
Yeah, it depends on what the board wants to do with that, that would certainly be a separate.
Right, so, but it's not part of this four point seven, this is, but I don't want us to forget about that because I know when we started this back in May, we mentioned technology rooms within the buildings and it didn't work financially, but they're still floating out there someplace, so.
So I'm thinking out loud, here's the conundrum that you talked about. So if I vote for this project and then next week or the week when we vote on the financing, I don't agree with the financing, I vote no on that.
That's the conundrum, I think that's what I want, and I wanted to state that.
And if I vote in opposition to this resolution and in two weeks the finance comes back and is very favorable and I vote for that, that's my problem. But I'm thinking out loud, I said.
No, that's right, that's right. And I'm like, yeah, that's exactly the point I was trying to make earlier and I want anyone struggling with that to, you know. For myself, I'll be honest, whether or not we funded this with monies from the fund balance or without monies from the fund balance, I think this is a good idea, this is a win-win for the district and the community. But that's me, that's, and so, it's.
This has to pass, because if this doesn't pass, why, then there's no second.
Absolutely, no question.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
I call for a vote.
We have, what's the official?
Well, if you want to do that, two-thirds of us have to agree that we'll stop debate, but we may not want, we may not want to debate anymore anyway, so let's, we'll have to see if that's the case.
Well, so it's calling the question, my understanding is calling the question is actually not a debatable item, so we immediately need to vote on it when somebody calls the question, this is my understanding, correct?
The paper requires a two-thirds vote.
It requires a two-thirds vote.
First, to stop debate. So just calling the question doesn't mean we stop voting, it means we vote on whether or not we want to stop debate. But first, maybe we should, as a suggestion, maybe we should see if there is more debate. I kind of sense we're at the end of it.
We're about there, Richard's timing is on. All right, all right, we have a motion and a second. That's one more time for any further discussion, I appreciate everybody's comments. And with that, Mr. Clark, if you would please do a vote on.
Again, alphabetically, do we have to read the resolution?
Resolution fourteen ten, to approve the adult basic education and district office buildings project. Go ahead, please, Mr. Clark.
Alphabetical order, I'll vote aye, Tom Casper.
Looking forward to the financial debate, I vote aye.
Deb Davis.
Aye.
Yvette Martholler.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Never appreciated having an R as your last name, alphabetical until now. I will vote aye.
You get to listen to everybody else first.
Not that I was swayed, but.
Chairman Eggman.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, seven zero in favor.
Thank you all. And this brings us to item ten B, approve the world's best workforce.
Good evening. What's being passed around is basically a summary of what this world's best workforce document contains. And what you'll see on the screen in front of you is what will be published on the website tomorrow if this is approved. A little bit of history, we've kind of talked about this at work sessions a few times over the past year. And what this is replacing is the annual report on curriculum and instruction. And to give you a little bit of background as quick as possible, what this document is allowing us to do is to show and bring to attention all the things that we do currently in the district that are targeted at five specific goals per the state statute. That is, making sure students are ready for kindergarten, making sure students are reaching grade level literacy at third grade, making sure we address the achievement gap, making sure we have students at their rate, their graduate from high school and making sure that after high school, they are prepared for whatever life goes with them in terms of college or career. So what is in the document is all of the plans that we currently have in the district that are aligned to those five things. So what you see on the screen is the list of documents and it's on this sheet of paper as well of all the things that we have in place that are to meet those five goals. And rather than go through all of them, what they, if it's shown on the website tomorrow, what a person can do is, where there is an active link in a different color, they can click on specifically what is there and each thing has a summary that explains how it aligns to this initiative.
Phil, and you're going to, on the second bullet point, all third graders can read at grade level. Explain, how are you going to do that?
Well, what we have in place is a literacy plan and what we're doing is, we're using a process that includes RTI to determine and kind of track kids and see where they're at from kindergarten all the way to third grade so that we can put the interventions in place to make sure that by third grade, they're achieving our standards of grade level.
Would it make any sense to, for that particular item, to present that to the board at a work session? Mr. Sessker, is that more detail?
Yeah, and I think too, at some point, we, when we start developing our three to five-year comprehensive plan, I think that needs to be included in there and what needs, we need to, what we need to address that. If we need more staff, if we need a reading intervention or a math intervention, or whatever it might be, we need to study that and evaluate that and then come up with a recommendation to implement that into a strategic plan.
And this is something that is part of one of the plans that we have to submit every year to the state, the Read Well by Third Grade Plan. So that's just kind of goes right off of that.
So what are we may ask to do here?
To approve this plan.
This document.
These collection of documents? Yes.
And this is from the legislature.
Yes.
Developed this.
It's from statute.
Goal, staffing for school districts, and I think you guys did a great job, and suddenly I'm grateful.
This is your turn.
This is in, this is the list of attachments, list of plans that are being sent in with this.
Are there any questions?
So are we comfortable with all of these reports in this document?
Yeah, the majority of these are things that we already submit to the state anyway, so it's just a matter of pulling them all together.
Okay.
For a closet of documents.
Nothing on here that we really disagree with.
Or that we're not required to do by the state.
I'm sorry?
I'm just saying the reports and the programs here are basically state mandated testing and so on and we're just gathering this into a single report that the state has chosen, whether for good or for ill, to call the world's best workforce. My own personal thing is they made a mistake by not calling it the world's best citizens and looking at things a little more broadly, but this is what the state called it, so this is what we can call it.
I move.
Second.
The motion is second for approval, any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hold the same sign.
Thanks again for the NASA grant.
Thank you for all your work. And I think just, if I could just put a good plug for Colleen and Phil, it really did take a lot of work. It's somewhat controversial at points, but it took a lot of work to put this plan together, so thank you two very much for doing that. That was good work.
And Pam too.
And Pam, yes, Pam was part of that, Pam can.
All right, and this brings us then to other items of information, beginning with our student representative.
Hi, I'm Emily Romy, once again. So at the high school, I guess December's going to kick off our Toys for Tots fundraising, where we raise funds for Toys for Tots. In the past, we've donated about ten thousand every year, so that's fun. And then also, the winter sports are kicking off, a lot of the other types of things that we've got going on, science team, DECA, math team, the robotics team, a lot of other things that I didn't mention are happening. And I think students and teachers alike are excited for Wednesday, so, yes. And I think students and teachers alike are excited for Wednesday, so, yes.
Chair, can I make a comment? Uh, and I just wanna say, sincerely appreciate you taking time out of your very, very busy schedule to be here to, uh, enlighten us about what's happening at the high school and the district. In the years I've been on the board, um, our student representatives, and they're all very busy people, have, uh, has not been as significant as what you have presented in the last few months, so thank you very much for doing that.
Yes, thank you so much.
I'll just second that, 'cause I'm looking at your arms right now. I don't know how, I didn't know you could get that many of those.
So, I can get eleven at the end of the year, so... I have no idea.
Can we get her one for a stu, school board representative?
I think we should.
Um, one more thing, uh, theater, we just ended, closed Rosie the Riveter on Sunday, and that was a wonderful show. Um, I know Todd sent an email to you guys, and I think, I think this was on there. I don't know, Mr. Jay gave up.
I sent that to Beyond the Yellow Ribbon.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, but yes, thank you so much. That was so nice of you. Um, yes, we had a great time, and it was a good show. Anyway, thank you guys for clapping for me. That was really, things like that.
Say a little more about that ten thousand dollars you raised?
Um, yeah, no, for Toys for Tots, the student council, we just put together a bunch of activities. Um, in the past, we've done, um, like, we've had silent auctions for like pie and teachers in the face. Um, we've always done like paranoia, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that game at all. Um, it's cards where you type people, and you get, um, different things. We've done music over the intercom, and you're like, it's annoying, and you have to pay to get it off. Um, we did the old time school song one day, and a lot of the coaches were not okay with that, so we raised a lot of money, um, for that. This year, we're doing, um, a mail pageant, um, so it's, you can, guys, um, doing talents and wearing ugly sweaters, hopefully, we'll see. Um, we're also gonna do a clash of the cash, which is like a penny wars, also homeroom cash drive to see what grade can raise the most money. Um, we will be doing another Battle of the Classes type assembly, or, um, where we're gonna have, students can put their names in a hat, and then, um, they have to like pay to do it, and then they can, um, if they get called, and they come down and like do, um, games against all the grades. Uh, there's tons of things going on. I'm hoping that we can raise more than ten thousand this year, hopefully, we'll see, but, I don't know. We, this last week, last week, we, um, had a little thing going on at Tana, to, to see who could raise more money. But it was before our normal Toys for Tots, so a lot of students didn't really, you know, get into it, 'cause they weren't expecting it this soon. But we did raise a thousand dollars, anyway, so that's really, really nice, nice start off.
Excellent.
So, yeah.
Sounds like extortion for a best part.
Excellent. All right, any other questions for Emily? Thank you very much. Um, and that brings us to school board members, items, items of information.
Pardon us to Mr. Johnson for, uh, electing Rosie the Riveter.
Yeah, absolutely. I was not able to make it, but I've heard outstanding things, and had a lot of positive feedback from him, as I said.
Jason, uh, coming up, I'll be represent, uh, our district and area three and the delegate assembly, December fifth and sixth. And some of the resolutions got on there, uh, one kinda died in, you know, at the MSBA, but we're gonna, one was approved, and one we're gonna fight for, so there's two that, that was good that you guys approved.
Thank you for doing that, Richard. Any other items of information?
Several years ago, when I first joined the board, we had a, uh, a board book of reading in collaborative. And, uh, I know that it, it takes a lot of time and, and effort, but I would like to at least recommend to my fellow board members and to the public, uh, a book entitled More Than a Score. And it's a collection of essays gathered by Jesse Hagopian, who happens to be a, uh, history teacher, uh, at Garfield High School, the site of the, um, test boycott in nineteen, in twenty thirteen, where a group of staff and students refused to take some standardized tests. And, not that I'm recommending that we have a boycott, but I am recommending that we explore the issues involved in, and the possible shortcomings of standardized testing as a sole measurement of student achievement. More Than a Score, edited by Jesse Hagopian. Contact me if you want further...
Thank you, Tom. Any other items of information from board members? And that brings us to the superintendent then.
Uh, yes, I was able to attend the Rice County Services Collaborative Celebration, were you there? I missed that, that was good. Um, Rice County Service Collaborative meets in month, on, on a monthly basis. They do a lot of good things for, for our schools. One of the things that they do is they support our social workers by offering us a grant that's worth about twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's a good organization. Uh, I, along with Maria and Colleen Cardinuto, and our two integration folks, uh, Phil, oh, not Phil, I'm sorry. Chris Dibble and Cora Little were interviewed by FCTV, and were able to put that out on FCTV, and it's shown a couple of times, and, and it was a good interview. Maria did an excellent job. She's out there, so, but she did a great job. I also met with Tom Donlin from Fairbale BA. It's nice to just make a connection with the, uh, people who are the administrators in the different buildings. Tom Donlin is the principal at BA, and had a cup of coffee, and we were able to talk about different things that both the schools are doing. Was, uh, on KDHL this last Wednesday, talking to Gordy, and I appreciate KDHL and what they do. They try to, to help us get the, the good word about what our public schools are doing out there. I am also part of the Minnesota, uh, Academies Board, so this time around, we had it at MSAB, and we had our board meeting. It's very productive, and it really has helped me get a good grasp on what those programs are all about. It's a very good program that we offer within this community, in the lowest grade schools. I'm also on the ISAA Executive Committee for the state, and that's our superintendent's organization, and the executive committee basically looks at our platforms and talks about different workshops and things that are coming up in the future, and how we can restructure some of those things. And the last thing, probably the most important, is I did, as, uh, Emily said, I went to Rosie the Riveter, and I can honestly say it's one of the best plays that I have seen, and you guys did an outstanding job, so it was very, very well done. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you all. Um, next up, we have dates to remember. Um, December first, two thousand fourteen, uh, at five thirty PM, uh, will be a work session at the district office. December eighth at seven thirty AM will be the finance meeting at the district office. December eighth at three thirty PM will be the curriculum advisory committee meeting, um, at the district office. December ninth at four thirty PM will be the policy committee meeting in the district office. December fifteenth, um, at six thirty PM will be our regular board meeting, um, which normally would take place in this building, but it is not available, so we will be meeting at the Fairbale Middle School, uh, where it will be recorded and aired at a later time instead of being aired live. Um, so, uh, with that, that brings us to item thirteen, which is a closed session. Uh, to clarify that the action is just to move us into the session, so I always have to remember how we have to do this. So, we need to move in a second to move into closed session, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, there will be no action taken during closed, closed session. Um, it's just an item for discussion for us, so...
And you need to state the topic of the closed session.
So, the topic of the closed session is to discuss the superintendent evaluation. Um, the committee has met, and we'd like to, to bring that to your attention and, and discuss it with you. Um, so we'll be doing that this evening. So, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to move into closed session.
Should move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move into closed session, um, and a discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.